Is your HVAC system ready for the new season? Seems early, but fall is in the air. Call Premier Heating and Air for a $69 system checkup to ensure your heater is ready for action. If your system needs service or replacing, Premier will provide you with the best options for your situation. Premier Heating and Air offers several services to ensure your home's comfort. Let one of our technicians come out and clean and seal your air duct system, add attic insulation, clean your dryer vent, or install one of our indoor air quality products to keep your home pleasant. Call today to experience the Premier difference.
The October 19th, 2023 meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called to order. Please stand as we have the invocation from our host this evening, Pastor Alton Jones. Mr. Jones, Reverend Jones.
Let us pray. Father, God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you for all your goodness and all you many blessings. God, we thank you for this time and this hour that you have brought us together. And God, I ask you now that you will intervene and be a part of this meeting. As you said, "In business, be men." And God, I thank you for wisdom and knowledge and understanding as we go forth with this city council meeting. And God, I thank you, Lord, in advance, for prosperity and success as we go forth. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone, thank you for coming to this evening. This is the second of four Chat and Chew's that we have at different locations throughout the community. We're honored to be here tonight at Pritchett Park and want to say a special thanks to Pastor Jones and the Loving Ministry Church of God in Christ for hosting us this evening.
And want to say a special thanks.
All right. And also, our food this evening is from Southern Heritage. I want to thank them for catering. And I also want to give a special thanks to Felicia Aaron, Renee Cook, and Robert Jefferson for coordinating everything this evening, getting us set up, moving all of our city business here to Pritchett Street Park so that we can have the meeting here in the community this evening. Now that we have gotten through the preliminaries, it's time to begin with our agenda items. The first item on our agenda this evening is approval of the October 5th, 2023 city council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones. Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilman Briggs. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number two of the agenda, which is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
The council has all of the bills over $15,000 in your package.
Any questions regarding any of those bills from council members? If there are no questions, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Briggs and a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three of the agenda, which is approval of purchases over $15,000. I believe we have two of those on the agenda this evening. Mr. Powell.
The first of those is a building for our firing range, which is off of Finnisson Road, close to the waste water treatment plant. This would be for a 30 by 6 feet metal building and with a 12 by 6 feet lean-to. The low bid was from Portable Building Outlet LLC, an amount of $25,900. This was budgeted, and that quote does come in under budget. We ask that you award that bid to Portable Buildings Outlet LLC. The second purchase is for the relocation services needed to relocate a gas regulator station that we have on Highway 80, which is near Bethlehem Truck Road. The Georgia Department of Transportation is going to be constructing a roundabout at that intersection. This is out in East Dublin. And we have a regulator station for our gas service that is located there, and they will be reimbursing us this cost to get this relocated off of the new right-of-way. This, the low bid was from D-Land Salar Incorporated, in the amount of $16,250. This was not budgeted, but again, GDOT will be reimbursing us this cost, so we ask the council to approve those two purchases this evening.
All right, we discussed the details of these purchases at our pre-council meeting, but are there any questions or comments from any council members about these two items at this time?
Mayor, what's the timeline? What's the reward for this portable, portable building as far as getting that implemented?
For the firing range? Mr. Powell.
Chief, do you know the timeline on that?
Concrete's supposed to be starting in two weeks, and as soon as that cures, it's supposed to be done.
So that's, concrete will start in two weeks. As soon as the concrete cures, then they'll start building the building or erecting the building. Any other questions? All right, if there are no other questions, do we have a motion?
Somebody.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown to approve these two purchases, with a second from Councilman Briggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I do want to thank Councilman Briggs. I know that for, even before I was elected mayor, you were working on the firing range and the police training center. And so this is hopefully taking that project to its conclusion. I want to appreciate your years of work getting that done. We'll now move to item number four on the agenda, which is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to regulate improper use of public areas. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2314, an ordinance by the mayor and city council. The city of Dublin, Georgia, to add a new Article 7 to Chapter 14, of which is under offenses, to be titled "Improper Use of Public Areas," to provide perseverance, to repeal all ordinance in parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to provide for an adoption effective date, and for other lawful purposes.
All right, thank you for that. We had a first reading of this ordinance at our last meeting. Now, this is the second reading and opportunity for a public hearing. At this time, we will close our regular council meeting and open a public hearing to receive comments regarding this proposed ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this proposed ordinance? Now is your opportunity at this public meeting. If there is no one who wishes to speak regarding this ordinance, we will close the public hearing and turn this item back over to council for action. Do we have a motion regarding this proposed ordinance? We have a motion to approve from Councilman Colby, and there will be an opportunity for comments after we have a motion and a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Briggs. Now is an opportunity for anybody to comment regarding the motion. We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, so this ordinance is meant to fill in some gaps that we have in our existing panhandling ordinance and lording ordinance that we have. And it's really meant to give an opportunity for the police department to engage with individuals and give them an opportunity to comply, primarily is the, is the, is the first part of this. So before any citation is able to be given or arrest is made for violation of this ordinance, the individual will have to be given an opportunity to relocate if they are improperly using public areas. And this is for people who may set up a tent or something on the city sidewalk or in a park area, or who may obstruct entrances or exits from buildings in town. And so this is hopefully going to give the police department what they need to be able to deal with these individuals.
This is not just for downtown Dublin, is this for...
Oh, no, it's citywide, this is what it is.
Any other questions? And just to kind of follow up on that, if you look at the actual parts of the ordinance, it does things like, it addresses defecating and urinating in public, bathing in fountains, blocking entries and exits to buildings, and it would make sure that we don't have Tent City pop up in any of our parks or sleeping bags on sidewalks, that type of thing. And as, as our city manager said, the police have, will be given information about what kinds of services they can offer people, and there will be a warning before any, before any type of police action would happen. So there will be an opportunity to comply, opportunity for resources and a warning.
Can I ask that the police chief work with Loving Our Community Coalition and other organizations locally to, to make up that list of resources that will be available to people as they are contacted with them and even inform them about this issue?
Yes, we will do that.
Any other comments or requests related to this proposed ordinance? All right, and I think everybody knows that we're not going to solve the homeless problem in America or even in Dublin here tonight. This ordinance is just to fill in some gaps of what we have currently in our ordinances and to make sure that we are proactively working to get information about resources to those people who are affected. Now we have a motion and a second. At this time, we'll have a roll call vote on this ordinance. Ms. Browning here, Ms. Browning, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Was that a yes? Okay. Councilwoman Godfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby?
Yes.
Councilman Briggs?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Allen's Heating and Cooling is your licensed Manna Equipment Dealer. Trust Allen's Heating and Cooling to install and service your heating and air conditioning unit. Allen services all brands, and with the purchase of a new unit, Amana offers a lifetime compressor warranty. Sean Clark or any of his friendly staff can help you today at Allen's Heating and Cooling. Your Amana dealer, Amana, last and last and last. Quality products and installation since 1985. That's Four Seasons.
All right, we will now move to item number five of the agenda, which is a first reading of an ordinance to annex 3.899 acres at Pilot Place and Airport Road. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2315, annexing and incorporating into the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, 3.899 acres, more or less of land located at parcel 099B136 as R4, which is multifamily residential zone. Proposed use is for multifamily development. This piece of property is located at the intersection of Pilot Place and Airport Road, which is directly behind Walmart there on the corner. And the proposed development is a 64-unit apartment complex. Staff and the council have had the opportunity to meet with the developer and come up with some specific requirements for the way this development will look and the layout and the design, with a particular look or emphasis towards the public space that's available there for the residents that will live at this complex, and to make sure there's enough green space and sidewalks. And also, we will have lighting there available and security cameras by way of flock cameras, which are the tag reader cameras there around the vicinity. And, and the city will also be, if this passes, will be resurfacing or having Pilot Place resurface as a part of this project.
Okay, so this is a first reading only. At our next city council meeting, there will be a public hearing where we can receive opportunity, there will be an opportunity to have public comment regarding this proposed ordinance, which would annex four acres of land for additional apartment, for our apartment complex. Since that is a first reading only, we'll now move to item number six, which is discussion and action on an easement for the Oconee Gym. Mr. Powell.
I think they're making improvements to the football field in particular at Oconee Gym over the past several years. An irrigation system was put in a few years ago, as well as new fencing around the field to keep people from driving over it. And most recently, we've respricked the field with new grass with help with the rec department. We've also purchased new field goals to put up at the field. Those of you that have been out there know those field goals, they are very old and need to be replaced. So we've got the field goals in, but on the north side of the field, there was some interference with Georgia power lines that were running there, and we couldn't put them up with those power lines existing where they were. So we've gotten Georgia power to relocate those, and they've been willing to do that at no cost at the city under our franchise agreement. But part of that relocation to still feed power to the Oconee Gym, they'll have to run across our lot from Washington Street further north on, off of Washington Street, and so they need an easement to do that. And this easement is in the council's packet, and we ask that you approve that tonight.
Okay, you heard Mr. Powell's explanation. Are there any questions for him regarding this easement? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Godfrey. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the easement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, it would be great to see that project with the field goals be able to get underway with that power line relocation. We'll now move to item number seven, which is declaration of surplus. Mr. Powell.
We have five items up for surplus for council's consideration tonight. The first is a, is unit number 421, which is a clam loader that's coming from yard trimming or the sanitation department. The next is a, or the next four pieces of equipment are from the golf course. The first is an aerator, a Cushman 100-gallon sprayer attachment, a Toro 3100 reel master, and a Toro 3250 green master. Those are both numbers. These, all these pieces of equipment are beyond use for the city. We ask that you declare a surplus.
Any questions regarding these surplus items? We saw photographs of them at our pre-council meeting. Any questions? If not, do we have a motion? We have a motion from Councilman Briggs, a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. That brings us to the conclusion of our regular agenda items, and it's now time for citizens' comments. Since this is a Chat and Chew in our community city council meeting, we'll have, we'll take as much time as we need for citizens' comments this evening. I always welcome any citizens' comments. Is there anyone who'd like to, to make a comment this evening? I can't see who it is, but I see a hand. Okay, there you go.
Uh, Mayor, I noticed something. My name is Carolyn McKim. And I was just wondering why the little survey was placed on Facebook for the park thing, and then we had to put yes or no if we wanted the Stubbs Park to remain. You know, there are a lot of good citizens that don't use Facebook, and couldn't you find another option to say whether we wanted to keep Stubbs Park there? And if you move it, since it's the polling place, it has been on my mind where you want to put it.
All right, thank you for that comment. I think, Lindsay, do you mind telling, telling us how all, all the different methods that you've been advertising, the Parks Master Plan?
Yes, the most recent survey that was open, which actually closed today, was advertised as a newspaper. We did community outreach in person. We had all of the plans put up at the parks for two weeks, and we were out at the Chili Cook-Off last Saturday to get public input. There's two concepts, one with the gym and one without, and then the activities building would still be there for the concept that doesn't have the gym. And so we wanted public input on what they thought.
Thank you. Any other public comments or questions this evening? All right.
Eugene Smith, can you give us an update on Emery Thomas Auditorium?
Mr. Powell, the question just for anybody that's watching on video, the question was an update on Emery Thomas Auditorium. Mr. Powell?
Yes, we've got, we have our water construction department running the sewer line that's necessary to serve for the kitchen, that will be the warming kitchen, that will be up there in one of the, what was formerly a storage room on the, the side of the stage area. Once they're finished with all the plumbing needs for that, we're working on getting orders in for the equipment that will be needed for that area. The lighting has been installed now in the facility. The painting has been done. They'll have to come back and do some touch-ups. What remains is the roof repair that needs to be done. They'll be doing that the next few weeks. And then also, the windows, they're going to open up the, the, all three sections of the windows are going to be open, so they're going to put, install new glass in all three sections. The bathrooms have been, the demolition of the bathrooms has taken place. Some of the tile has come in, but not all of it. Our, the designer that was chosen for the project has selected a particular tile, and so it's on its way. Once that's, once we receive that, that'll be, the bathroom work will be completed. So we're, it's in progress. We're just, we're still working on it. And I don't know if you have a particular question about something in particular, but it's, it's ongoing. They're getting close to being finished. Hopefully by the end of November, but probably will be from the December before it's ready. Also, we're dealing with the final, on the furnishings, the designers picked out some particulars, and so I'm working trying to make sure the cost there is slowed down, but she's got very good taste in, but we want to make it very nice. So we've got some things for the lobby area, some furnishings for there, some planners for out front, and then the 250 chairs for the auditorium area for when it's ready for an event. Particularly, I know the city uses it for when we have citywide events with all the city employees, so we want to make sure we have seating for everybody and tables. And the stage curtain, we're working on getting that replaced, as well as, as well as new shades for the windows that are going to be opened up. Because if you open up all those windows, you're going to need shades for, because it's going to be very bright in there.
I just want to add one more thing. Today, the county was out at Riverview paving the entrance road that takes you from Riverview Drive out to the Emery Thomas Auditorium. And I want to thank, I want to just publicly thank the county and Brenda Chang in particular for securing that project for the facility there. Thank you for, for doing that for the city. That, that road was just, it was more a pothole than it was a road, so it's good that that's gotten smoothed out. Now, we're working right now to figure out about resurfacing the parking lot. The parking lot is so uneven that it's going to have to be scraped, that they couldn't just come in and resurface it, so that may take some more time, but that is something that we're looking at as well. But I think if you go out there next week, you'll see a resurfaced road, thanks to the county and Commissioner Chang.
From humble beginnings with a desire to serve the Dudley community, Bank of Dudley has grown to five locations, serving Lawrence, Twigs, and surrounding counties. Serving our community since 1905, the Bank of Dudley is looking forward to its second century of community banking. Drop in today to any of our five locations: Jeffersonville, Dudley, East Dublin, Veterans Boulevard, and Downtown Dublin. Bank of Dudley, member FDIC, and an equal housing lender.
Now's the time to get a great deal on the number one rated tractor brand for durability and owner experience. Professional-grade mowers, durable sidekick utility vehicles, and versatile compact tractors. It's the equipment you need to take care of your land. Right now, bring home select Kubota equipment for zero down, 0% APR for up to 60 months, plus save up to $800.
Your Kubota dealer is Midstate Tractor and Equipment, 1325 North Jefferson, Dublin.
Yes, I'm Ray Blotwerd, and Mayor Kyle, I'd like to ask you a question. Since you in support of removing the gym at Stubbs Park, can you explain to each and every one of us about the voting precinct? And what is going to take place with that?
Sure, I'll be happy to. I'll, I'll explain my position on this, understanding that it's council that they have to vote on it, but I think I've been very clear that, that I support the removal of the existing Stubbs Gym. And the reason is this, it's very expensive to maintain a gym when you're talking about heating, cooling systems, electrical systems, and then also staffing. So you're talking about the opportunities for kids to play basketball or to play a sport in that space. It requires that you have somebody to open that door and be there with them. And so my thought has always been that it will have, you'll have more opportunities for kids to be able to utilize the park if you have something like outdoor basketball courts, especially if they could be covered. Now, we have other gyms, and I understand that the county, the rec authority is building a new gym out at Southern Pines in addition to the $3 million that we're spending to renovate the Oconee Gym. The one usage that has been historically done at the Stubbs Park Gym has been voting. And I understand that there's some concern about what happens to that voting precinct if you take down the Stubbs Park Gym. So basically, for one day a year, you have the voting. And so in my view, you shouldn't keep the whole gym and all the expense that goes along with that just for one day, especially if we can find an adequate space to have the voting in nearby. And there have been a couple places that have been proposed. One is the Activity Center, which is currently there at Stubbs Park. It's right next to where the gym is. If you look at the proposals, you have Proposal A with no gym, but there's still an Activity Center. And then you have Proposal B, which keeps both a smaller building where the families in, what's it, the, where the communities, what's it called? The community is as cool as it currently is. Where Family Connections is. So there's basically, one version has two buildings and one has one building. So that current Activity Center could act as a polling place. If that doesn't work for whatever reason, then there's also the opportunity to put it at the Lawrence County Library. So there will certainly be an, an adequate space, you know, nearby for voting, even though that would have to be determined later on. Now, I think what happens is that sometimes you just have to make hard choices. Do you want a new park or do you want a new gym? Because the, we've seen the cost of renovating the Oconee Gym is in the millions of dollars. So do we want to spend that money on yet another gym, which would be the third gym in addition to all of the high school gyms that are already there? Or do we want to spend that money creating a large, open space that would be accessible for everybody without having to pay somebody to open a door for it? So that's, that's my opinion, and I've been upfront about that opinion, but ultimately, council will have to vote on it, taking into account the citizens' comments. Thank you.
My name is Martha Walden, and I want to be concerned about the water lines in my neighborhood that several people are having problems with underground, Martha Walden. That people are having problems with the pipes busting under the ground. And it's a strange thing that when they come out, it's always on their side and not the city. My concern a little bit is, I see city workers up in yard doing water, I mean, work for people, and I mean, you know, I don't understand that. Same for my sister. She won't speak on it, but she has on Hudson Drive and Bell Drive over in that area. And, and people are having problems with water lines over there. And like I say, it's strange that it's always on their line and not the city, but I think that the city should look and help replace some of those lines.
Can I share one thing just from being in real estate for a while? Those pipes only last about 40 to 50 years. So when you're, I live in a neighborhood that's 60 years old now, and that is becoming an issue in our neighborhood. So just, just realize that, that pipes don't last forever.
I know that.
And if you're in a, in a house that's 50 or 60 years old, that it, it sometimes happens too.
I want to say, I brought back the council over a year ago. Over a year ago, still not heard from Matt, from the staff about a warranty program that would help the citizens, where they will pay if it's on your line, are they going to cause you to extra $12 a month? I have not heard back from that. So it's, so it's solutions out there for, to help you out, man. They have a warranty program. You pay extra $12 a month, and something wrong, they say it's on your side, they will come out and fix that for free. That's all I'm going to say about it.
But where is it at? I mean, you have a little...
Ask staff. Been over here, ask staff. About to them over here.
Staff, where is it at?
Yeah, we, we've been looking at that, but also what's going on too is there's a, we're having to do an inventory of the lead service lines in the city, so that's ongoing right now. And I believe that there's going to be eventually a mandate to get all that replaced. But yes, if it's, if it's past the, the water meter, that's where the, the city's obligation stops. So if it's on, if it's, you know, up into your yard, then that's most likely going to be your, but I'd also say to your comment about city workers going up into people's yards, if they have, I don't know if they have a gas line or not, but if they do, those are typically up at the house, and so they will be walking up there for that and doing all that.
No. Because you could about tell, I mean, you know what's going on with that. I mean, you don't have to be a genius to figure that out.
Well, you have to let me know particularly the circumstance you're talking about, and I can deal with that.
All right, thank you for those comments. Anybody else have a comment? Wait, wait, wait one second. We got to get your microphone. There you go.
I'm Betty Denson, and I live at 303 Simons Street, and that street needs something. Anyway, because those folk leave that nursing home, come off TFM, that like is a, a, a race track. And I'm so proud that this little girl, she's, whatever. Anyway... Anyway, she got across the road before a car came by, like, hey. And there's a hole right down there as you come out of a nursing home. Little mess, a bit tired as a girl. That street is old, and folks is always up and down, up and down. And, you know, say, "Let me watch him this out." And it's a mess, and it's been that way, and I've been over there for all the years. And I hadn't seen anything done to that street. And I would appreciate it if you would put some big breaks on it. Because I'm... Thank you so much.
All right, so I appreciate that comment. What we have is a, we have a rolling list of streets that are getting traffic calming, which is everything from speed cushions to just street redesign. And so we take public comments, and if you say Simmons Street is an issue, is it Simmons Street, is that right? Okay, then we'll get that on the list. And what will happen is that since we, basically you've just nominated that as a street, you know, for traffic calming, and our city engineer will take a look at it when we have our next round of traffic calming and see if it qualifies. If it does, then we'll take some action. So now, we already have the next two rounds of streets already determined. So it would be the round after that. But I've just asked Mr. Powell to write that street name down so we can get it on the list for the round that we're trying to fill up now with streets. All right, so thank you, thank you for your comment.
Since 1916, Gravely has been designed, engineered, and made right here in the USA. Whether you prefer gas or electric, every Gravely has been forged with the commercial landscaper in mind. So they're not only built to last, but to also keep you riding comfortably from dawn to dusk. So ask yourself, are you ready to graduate to a Gravely? Visit your local Gravely dealer today.
Hey, I'm TJ with Dublin Outdoors and Powersports, formerly known as Magic Equipment Supply. We're a full-line dealer for Gravely lawnmower sales and service.
Come see why more and more people are shopping the friendliest grocery store in town.
I shop at Pickle Wiggly.
Shopping for the freshest produce around.
I shop at Pickle Wiggly.
Shopping for certified Angus beef.
I shop at Pickle Wiggly.
We bag and carry your groceries to your car.
I'm Michael Willis, and we come to work every day to serve you.
And I'm Mike Willis, and we'd like to thank you for shopping at Pickle Wiggly.
Anybody else have a comment? Yes.
Good afternoon, my name is Japhlyn, and I'm East Darn White. This is Gregory Hudson-Bryant. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we look around here, I didn't bring in the handouts tonight. I just want you all to take a look at Pritchett Park. Pritchett Park, as other parks, on the website, is designed by the City of Dublin for all of us in Dublin to take a part. If you know how to use a computer, or if you do not know how to use a computer, get someone in your household that's going to school right now in the Dublin City Schools, West Lawrence City Schools, East Lawrence City Schools, or Trinity Christian Schools, so that we won't have to come out here and undertake a chat and chew where there aren't adequate seats, there aren't any outside porta potties, or things that are adequate for children, or if I am a resident of this particular district and ward, I can't go running around the track here. There's no walking trail. There are quite a few things that this side of town wasn't thought about. I have moved here from the great state of Virginia. And Georgia is not like any other state. We can get grant funding, we can get anything if the citizens first go out and vote. The early voting started Monday at the registrar's office. I did go out and cast my vote. It's not who I voted for, it's what I voted for. They have a SLOX question that all of us need to take a part in. And I won't mind telling you that I voted yes. You talk about, you want your streets done? Well, go and vote, and then you can get your streets done. Because then you have the adequate funding that you are elected these council officials to do to find out how we can make Dublin a great place to live. That's all I have to say, have a great day. I'll see you at the next chat and chew at Pound Four, United America.
So, you know, I wanted to say this, that you're 100% right about the SLOX, especially as it relates to Pritchett Street Park. You know, we've got these park designs out there, and one of the designs is to basically redo Pritchett Street Park with walking trails and new equipment, and taking out the road that separates the park into two parks. And we've been getting comments on all that stuff, and we want to implement it, but it takes money. And the SLOX sets aside a couple of million, two or three million dollars for city parks that would allow us to do that. And I know that's very important, that everybody get to vote on that issue. Any other citizens' comments?
I'm up again. Ms. Walden, I talked about the street breakers in the road. I witnessed yesterday over on Rutland Drive, I need a street breaker. A little one about two years old, I imagine, for running wild. I mean, he could have easily got ran over. He could have very easily.
I couldn't agree with you more about the speed of traffic in neighborhoods. And one of our primary goals as a council has been to get these speeding cars out of our neighborhoods, or at least force them to slow down. And, you know, we have spent a lot of time researching how we can do that and starting to implement it now with these speed cushions and also road redesign. The neighborhoods are for families, the neighborhoods are for kids to be able to go out, own the sidewalks, or even in the street without being, you know, having the fear of being run over by speeding traffic. And if we're going to improve the quality of life for the citizens living in Dublin, we're going to have to get a handle on this issue, and I think the city council is really working hard on that. Thank you for that comment. We'll put Rutland Drive on the list.
Oh, yes, because they have all kinds of tools.
All right. Thank you. I think we've got another comment here.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, John, I'm Mary. I just have a question for this weekend. We used to have lights, I always see one. There are more that are coming for us this weekend. I can't hear you, I can't hear you, it's loud.
We approved it with Georgia Power, but they're the ones that have to put it up. So I'm hoping they'll make it, but we'll check with them tomorrow to see.
Okay, you can call.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'll tell them, I'll tell them you in particular.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Any other comments? Any other comments this evening? All right, it's been, okay, great.
I appreciate y'all. I'm talking, I don't know. I appreciate what y'all...
What's your name?
Oh, I'm Deborah Howard. I had came to the city council meeting to talk about the light pole on, like, going to Cave Dudley Village. I appreciate y'all taking care of that. Somebody came over and did something, it's still leaning, but they got it where it won't fall. And one more thing, y'all never did take care at Vincent Village, the parking lot? I want to know who going to pay for my tires. House authority, no, they said, House Authority told me, I don't address this. I think this is the third time. House Authority told me that's city property, and y'all told me it was y'all property. The last business meet, I mean, last council meeting I came to, that it was y'all property.
Can I ask you to get, Matthew Bradshaw is right here, sitting on the front row with the jacket on. Can you get with him about that? And just make sure we're clear on what we're talking about, and we'll look at it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, I have one more thing to say, y'all can hear me. Um, can we make sure that all of our parks, Scottsville, East Dublin, Pritchett Street?
We're the city of Dublin, not city of...
Okay, but Scottsville, can you, Mrs. Howard? Can you make sure all of us have the pattern so no one else can get hurt there? The head, the gold head. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yes, sir, yes, sir, on side five as well, sir, give.
Yeah, so Chris Smith is our representative to the Rec Authority. And so he just was saying he's going to talk with Brian Millet, the Rec Director, about that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so any other comments this evening? We're just, we're keeping the floor open as long as people want to talk. It sounds like, yep? Uh, yes. Matter of fact, I've met with the last person today. Uh, the, let me pull out the list here. Okay, so for the O'Conne Gym Advisory Committee, we have, this is a...
Who's on it? Who's on it?
Ms. McHugh, that's exactly what I'm about to go through. The city council had asked me to appoint an advisory committee to assist with certain issues that might come up with the O'Conne Gym renovation, including how to recognize the history of the building, also what to do about certain sports issues as relates to the gym floor, and also the flex spaces around the gym floor. And for that, I have talked with, and all these people have agreed to serve, Gynell Ellington and George Hollingsworth, who are alumni of the O'Conne High School. They've agreed to provide advice regarding the historic recognition that needs to happen at the gym, including questions related to who needs to be recognized, what events, what historic events need to be recognized there, and how that can be recognized, whether it's through murals, mosaics, plaques, or other types of recognition. For sports issues, Thomas Walker and Antoine Poldo have, they're actual users of the gym. They go there, they have played basketball and other sports at the gym. And I think that they are willing to serve in a volunteer capacity to talk about layout of the floor, what types of lining there should be, the surface of the floor, and issues like that. And then, at the suggestion of some council members, we've decided to get the youth council involved to provide advice regarding how to use the flex spaces around the floor. And that's Karitha Charleston, who is our youth council mayor, and Lakey Wright. Both of them on the youth council are excited to participate and provide information about how young people might want to use the O'Conne Gym. In addition, the county is contributing $500,000 to the project. And we've asked Ms. Brenda Chain, our commissioner who represents that area, to act as a representative of the county to provide any kind of advice related to the facility. So with that seven-person committee, I think they'll be able to provide great information and advice on the renovation of the gym. Now, of course, city council members can be involved in that to the extent that you're interested. Of course, this is a citizens' advisory committee. So if there are any of these particular issues that council members want to get involved with, or provide your input, and of course, that's always going to be welcome too. So that, I hope, answers that question. Excited to get moving on that. And I understand that, what's the timeline for that, Mr. Powell?
As soon as we have the community in place, we'll come.
As soon as we have the community in place, we will set up the first meetings with the government to talk about the construction.
All right. Any other questions? Yes.
We have natural gas all over town.
Get yourself a natural gas tank with a water heater and save space.
And have endless hot water.
Natural gas is more efficient than electricity.
And it's lighter than air.
When you install natural gas appliances...
You can get rebates up to $1,500.
The City of Dublin will finance you up to $7,500.
For 60 months at 0% interest.
Use natural gas for all your outdoor cooking.
It's a luxury.
We're on call 24/7.
You'll call us, and we'll be there.
Whether you're building a home or starting a business, City of Dublin Natural Gas has you covered.
We serve commercial and residential gas all across town.
Yeah. Call your gas guys.
All right, boys, if you want to go to college, you have to clear out another one of these.
What if we told you there was a better way to save for your kid's college than pickle jars? Morse Bank's Savings Builder Account and Mula makes saving for your kid's college easier than ever. All you have to do is connect the account to your debit card, where it automatically rounds up your purchases to the nearest dollar. Depositing that spare change into a Mula account, where it will grow into a nice little nest egg for whatever your kids have their sights set on.
Any other questions? Comments?
I have another question.
Well, we've got Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, if you want to, you sit up first.
Yes, I just want to commend y'all for what I think is a will. I think y'all doing an awesome job. We come in and give our input to you, but if we would have had this 30 years ago, we wouldn't be at this place where everything needs some help. So I commend y'all. You know, we come with some tough issues and some tough questions at times. We concerned about what's going on in our community, but we hadn't really got involved. And now we are involved, and we appreciate what y'all trying to do. There's a lot to be done, and we appreciate y'all willing to do something. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, it's still something positive, so I appreciate that. Yes.
Okay, I'm Ray Blotwerth. This, right here, if you could see it, it's been an issue for over two months or longer. This is Church and Mary Street. It's a serious issue. What Georgia Power did was go over there and put the paper around it. Oh, that's what I... They put a box.
Wait, just one second, can we get you a microphone so you can address it? This is talking about the pole that's at West Mary Street and Church Street.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Bradshaw?
The pole that was there was struck by a truck, and it, you know, crushed it basically. So Georgia Power has replaced it with a new pole that's right beside the old pole. And they have anchored the old pole to the new pole, and they've cut it off, it's a lot shorter. But then they'll have another crew that comes along and takes up old poles all at the same time all throughout the city. But there's no danger of it falling or anything, they've secured it to the new pole.
Okay, okay, that's good to hear. Also, can you add Lester Drive to the tree bump?
Lester?
Lester.
Lasseter.
Lester Drive to the tree bump.
Yeah, that's about double middle school, right. All right, anything else? Okay, well, this has been a great meeting, it's always good to get out in the community, and we've got some food in the back, so everybody enjoy. Thank you very much, this meeting's adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We, I forgot about council members. So we need to get, any comments? Oh, okay, Ms. Wright, and then council members?
Japhlyn Wright, 303 Hudson-Bryant. Again, I would like to commend this council for a job they've done tonight. I also want to educate a few people who may not understand that since we can go to social media, and you can get on your Facebook page, the City of Dublin has a Facebook page. If you go on the City of Dublin and follow it, every time they have an event, such as tonight, it says "Tonight Chat and Chew." Then, when they had the chili caulk, they had that up there. They have so many different items. If you just want to educate yourself, and then you can take the time and put your input. Our city manager, Josh Powell, he is the manager of the city. He tries to bring this all together. Tara Bradshaw, wherever she is over here, she does most of the grant writing. So don't keep and, you know, just have people think that no one is doing anything. As Mr. Smith's Christmas father over there... Mr. Smith's Christmas father over there said, thirty years ago, a lot wasn't going on in this city. And it has, has fast forwarded very quick into the new millennium. This is the new millennium. Education is the key. Stop sitting around la 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 la. Let your feet do your walking, and let your hands do the talking, and then you can get something done here in the city of Dublin.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Okay. It's time for council comments. We'll start with, um, Mr. Smith.
Thank everyone for coming out. It was good to see everybody. Uh, in Telfair crew, I thought y'all was going to get up and do y'all thing over there. But, uh, Telfair usually they say if you not know anything, you come out and enjoy, socialize. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, Mr. Griggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Um, it's been really good, and a lot of good comments. And, um, y'all have a good weekend, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You fooled me on that. Uh, just want to, uh, yeah, appreciate, uh, being able to host Chat and Chew here. We'll thank Mr. Reverend Jones for, for hosting us. Uh, weather was impeccable. And, uh, just want to thank everybody for being here. And, and we really enjoy these kind of, uh, meetings. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Jones?
Thank you everyone for coming out. Excuse my standing, but my back is chilling. My back is, but, uh, thank you everyone for coming out for your opinion, for your voice, your voice being, your voice, you are being heard, like someone said thirty years ago. I mean, can't change the past. All we do is grip toward the future. That's all we do. We try, try to change what's going on. Can't go back in the past. But thank everyone for coming out for your opinion, your, your, um, comments and opinions. Uh, November fourth would be a, um, a big, 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 um, football tournament here in Dublin. We talk about why we want to keep the gyms and these facilities. I'll be, let me tell you something. Gyms, football fields, it's money maker. You want to talk about splotch dollars going up, keep that gym. Imagine what you can do. That's all I'm gonna say. You talk about what you, the money gonna put in, you gonna put money in, but it could be a money maker. It's money being made with these football fields, these gyms, soccer fields, especially we got, it's money maker. We got to be smart and utilize them and keep, and conserve what we got as far as, as far as, um, what we got. But November fourth, if you come out, I guess at the high school that week, they have a tournament out there. Also, next, next Saturday, we're working on the date of time, starting looking for the flyer to post out. We will have a food drive that will be meat driven. We haven't been getting a lot of meat, but we have connect, we have got connect, we have got connection with, um, someone that worked with Tyson Food. They're bringing ten pallets of meats. We'll be giving that to Resource Center. You'll be see the flyer, they'll be going out by the time, exact time. But next Saturday, October twenty-eighth, at the Resource Center, we'll be giving out meat. So that'd be time to come out. These meats, we've been getting a lot of vegetables and a lot of canned goods, but this would be strictly meats. Ten pallets of nothing but meat. So spread the word. Thank you for coming out.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Godfrey?
Thank you all for coming out. I have two questions. First question is for the mayor. I know about two months ago, you and I took a ride in Telfair. One of my concerns was the building that's between the Jack's Meat Market and the, um, Amlet. It belongs to the DOT. It's dilapidating to me, and it's overgrown. And I wanted to know, have you heard back from them? Because I know you wrote them a letter.
Yeah. So, um, y'all may know, Councilman Godfrey and I sometimes will ride around the town, and, uh, she'll point out things that, um, could be improved. We'll just say it that way. Things that could be improved.
Yeah, that's the gateway into Telfair, and it needs to be...
Right. So we saw the, the, uh, Department of Transportation has an old yard where they have a lot of abandoned equipment, and they haven't kept that building up. So, um, after, uh, Councilman Godfrey pointed out to me, I wrote a letter to the, uh, Department of Transportation Commissioner, and, uh, asked them if they would work with the city to clean that lot up. As of yet, I've not had a response, but I will, uh, talk with Mr. Powell about trying to make a phone call follow-up and see if we can get a response to them. Because it is time to get a response for that and get that cleaned up.
Yeah. Cause that's people coming off of the interstate, coming down four forty-one, and that's what you see when you're coming into Telfair. Doesn't look good. Second question is for Matthew Bradshaw and Mr. Powell maybe. So I requested, um, for citizens to get a light put up at two oh five Robert Street, at corner Marcus and Robert. Do you know the status of that? Cause it's really dark right there.
Georgia Power can be put it up, same time they put this one up. Everything's been sort of a merry, and they've got all the paperwork, which what?
Thank you. And also, I just want to say thanks to the city staff for cleaning out around the trees by the Catherine Gray Library. There's a path that people take, and the city, I took pictures before, and I took pictures after. Thank you, Josh Powell, for riding with me over there to see that path and to see the overgrown trees where people can actually hide out. And I know the Resource Center is about to get started, and it needs to be cleaned up. So also, we need some more lighting over there, if that's possible?
Yes, I do.
All right. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming out.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Councilman Colby?
You see what it takes? It takes a lot of eyes and a lot of voices. So I'm super excited that everybody was able to come out tonight and express not just your opinions, but the struggles that each of us are going through to make, uh, Dublin a better place to live, work, and play. So, um, we're excited to see, um, different improvements being made, and we appreciate your comments tonight. I'm glad to be here.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you for all those comments. Now, we are about to, uh, serve supper. Uh, so you'll start, tell us where to start. You're gonna start on this side over here. But can we get a, a blessing for the food this evening? Uh, Mr. Jones, you might have given us the blessing.
It's by his, that follow, just thinking food about the seed and worship to our body Lord. And we just thank you for letting, um, take our improved Jesus and all the best hand prepared to Lord. He knows this, worship his son Jesus, amen.
And you made it.
All right. This means adjourn.